Okay Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, the November tenth regular meeting of the Village Council of Forest Park will come to order. We begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able, please rise. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Maxim?
Here.
Commissioner Nero?
Here.
Commissioner Melanrogovin?
Here.
Commissioner Vogt?
Here.
Mayor Hoskins?
Here. Okay, approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty-seventh regular council meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Maxim. Is there a second?
Nero, second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion? All right, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanrogovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye. Okay, public comment?
Yes, there is public comment. This is from the D ninety-one PTO. Hello Village Council, the Forest Park School District PTO would like to regularly update you all on what has been happening with the PTO. About us, the Forest Park PTO helps connect families, staff, and schools through events, fundraisers, and appreciation efforts that enrich the student experience across D ninety-one. We support all D ninety-one schools as one united organization. We plan school-specific and district-wide events. Monthly meetings, the first Wednesdays, are open to all, in person or online. There are no membership fees. If you're a D ninety-one caregiver, you're already in. How to get involved? Join a committee, help plan events, big or small, support fundraisers from restaurant nights to popcorn sales, volunteer when you can. Signups are shared on Facebook and in newsletters. Questions or ideas? Please reach out anytime to pto@fpsd91.org. The Forest Park PTO is looking for volunteers to sell concessions at the Forest Park Middle School Boys Basketball Home Games, which typically start at four and end around six fifteen. We will provide all concessions, training, and supplies you need. You just need to show up and help us raise some funds. If you're interested in helping raise funds, please email us at pto@fpsd, as in dog, ninety-one dot org. Monday, December eighth, from four to eight, is our dine and donate at Culvers on Roosevelt. Mention the D ninety-one PTO and ten percent of all orders will be donated to us. As always, anyone can reach out to us via email. Search Forest Park Ninety-One PTO to find us on Facebook as well. Thank you for all your time. From the PTO Board.
Thank you. Okay, there any other public comment? Okay. Commissioners, there's no formal communications tonight, no department reports. We're at bills by resolution. Whenever you're ready.
Be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Forest Park, Cook County, Illinois, that we dispense with the reading of the individual bills inasmuch as each department head has approved and signed bills in the following aggregate amount for their respective departments. Public Affairs: twenty thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Police Department: one thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars and nineteen cents. Community Center: two thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and thirteen cents. Accounts and Finance: one hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. Accounts and Finance Fire Department: three thousand five hundred eleven dollars and forty-one cents. Department of Health and Safety: eight thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. Streets and Public Improvements: eighty-six thousand three hundred forty dollars, forty-two cents. Public Property: seventeen thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars and eight cents. Seizure: two thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars fifty-five cents. Police DUI: one hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Federal Customs: four thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars and two cents. Tiff: five thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. VIP: six thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. Water Department: one hundred thirty-nine thousand seventy-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents, for a total of four hundred ninety-two thousand one hundred sixty dollars and seventy cents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, is there a motion to adopt the resolution on the bills?
I will make that motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Maxim. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero? Commissioner Melanrogovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is Resolution one thirteen dash twenty-five.
Okay, under new business, the first item is an ordinance adding new Article C entitled Ice Cream Vending Vehicles to Chapter Three of the Village Municipal Code. Is there a motion?
Yes, sir. Nero will make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Nero. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Maxim. Discussion? Commissioner Vogt?
Um. I think this is fun. I just had a couple of ideas and I wanted to, or questions, and I wanted to see what my fellow council members thought about it. I know it says that we would allow four, and I'm not sure if that seems like kind of a lot. I've looked at some other towns and, you know, that are three, four times our size, and they limit it at like three or six. So it's a new program for us. I didn't know if anyone had any issues with that, or if they thought it was fine. Personally, I would be more comfortable starting at like two, but that was one question I wanted to pose to you all.
Are you making a motion to amend the ordinance?
I was looking for... It didn't really occur to me, a particular number. So...
Yeah, the memo, it was with staff approval. I don't know if Rachel, if you want to sprinkle some color on that, was there something that got us to four?
It was between three and five. Honestly, we, I went back and forth with Nick Peppers about this, and, you know, it really just comes down to what the staff or the council wants. So we picked four to start with, four. Certainly, if there is strong sentiment from the council to make it smaller to start, we can.
Who doesn't like ice cream? Come on.
Yeah, I don't have any strong feelings about the number.
I also have no strong feelings about the number.
And then my only other question? Since this is an annual license and, you know, eight PM is a definitive time, I know that some parts of the year it gets darker later. I didn't know if that was something anyone was interested in amending to change it to eight PM or sunset on any particular given day, or whichever was earlier. And I only bring that for safety. Some days it gets really dark in the fall earlier. And if we wanted to maybe be wrapping that up before it got dark. I think that's a worthwhile consideration.
Can you manage that with something as vague as sunset?
Sunset is listed every single day. Like you could Google today and it's, it'll say four thirty-four or whatever. So you could be that specific. You could say dusk. I mean, there are different ways to word it, but it was something that did concern me. If, you know, we do get really nice, warm days in the fall and in the spring. So, you know, with those days maybe being a little darker earlier, I was a little concerned about safety there.
Yeah, I don't know. I, you know, it's one of those things where do we just let it rip and adjust as necessary and see how it goes since it's the first thing? I don't know. I'm kind of cool with it, but I get it from, from a safety standpoint, right? If it is darker and you got kids running out in the street, so I just don't have any real experience with any of that.
I will say that, you know, when we were putting this together, we went with eight o'clock with the idea that this would primarily happen in summer, and knowing that Forest Parkers are a pretty well-lit community. You know, we do have streetlights on every street, so that was kind of our line of thinking.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Well, I would be more inclined to let her rip with four, and if that seems to be too many, adjusting that after we've done a trial period. But I personally think it would be smarter to include the sunset language. Not as an incline to play around with a safety issue. So I can make a motion to amend.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Is, um, do we know legally is sunset like sort of a specific legal? You know, something that we can put in? I don't know exactly what I'm asking. You know, do we have to have a definite time, or can we have something as variable as sunset and use that as the?
You can use that type of designation. I mean, it's ascertainable.
Okay.
Indicated it's ascertainable. Through all kinds of applications, you know, every day.
Okay.
So I think, I think it's acceptable to have it that does.
Okay.
I mean, I would just, I, and I would move to say if we can tweak the language to suit the legality appropriately, but that it be vending, no vending before ten AM or after eight PM or sunset of any given day, whichever is earlier. So we would still have our eight PM cutoff, but if there is a...
So you said change the language, no vending before eight AM or after?
Before ten AM.
Or yeah, before ten AM?
Or after eight PM or sunset on any given day, whichever is earlier.
Okay, is it second?
Second.
Okay, so it's moved by, it's been moved by Commissioner Vogt and seconded by Commissioner Vogt.
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Oh.
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanrogovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is ordinance forty-eight dash twenty-five.
Now we're back to the main motion.
So we just, we just voted on the amendment. Now we have to vote on the original ordinance. Sorry. No, you're good.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the main motion? None on this side? All right, on the main motion.
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanrogovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is ordinance forty-eight dash twenty-five. Very nice.
All right, Commissioners, the next item is an ordinance approving and authorizing membership in the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network in an execution of the revised Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network Agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Melanrogovin. Is there a second?
No, second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Vogt. Discussion? All right, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanrogovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is ordinance forty-nine dash twenty-five.
All right, Commissioners, the next item is a resolution approving the specifications and authorizing the advertising of bids for the Village of Forest Park Lead Service Replacement Project Stage Three. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Melanrogovin. Is there a second?
No, second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Vogt. Discussion? All right, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanrogovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is Resolution one fourteen dash twenty-five.
All right, Commissioners, the next item is a resolution authorizing acceptance in the execution of an IDOT Sustained Traffic Enforcement Program for High Visibility Enforcement Grant for fiscal year twenty-six. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxim. Is there a second?
Sure, Nero, second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion? All right, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanrogovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is Resolution one fifteen dash twenty-five.
All right, Commissioners, the next item is a resolution authorizing the approval of pay request number eight for the AMI Water Meters Replacement Project, and this is to Berge Central. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Melanrogovin. Is there a second?
No, second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Vogt. Discussion? All right, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanrogovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is Resolution one sixteen dash twenty-five.
Okay, the next item is a resolution approving and ratifying the execution of a less lethal for law enforcement, less lethal device agreement with Elias. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxim. Is there a second?
Sure, Nero, a second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion? Okay, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanrogovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is Resolution one seventeen dash twenty-five.
Okay, Commissioners, the next item is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an AT&amp;T Dedicated Internet and IP Flexible Reach and Toll-Free Pricing Schedule Agreement with AT&amp;T. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved by Commissioner Maxim. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion? Okay, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanrogovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is Resolution one eighteen dash twenty-five.
All right, next item, we're seeking approval of a motion to direct the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to offer employment to the next eligible probationary police officer. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Maxim. Is there a second?
Yes, sir. Nero will second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion? Okay, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanrogovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye. All right, Commissioners, the final item under new business this evening is a motion seeking approval for a raffle permit for the Forest Park Historical Society. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Melanrogovin. Is there a second?
No, second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Vogt. Discussion?
I'd like to congratulate the Forest Park Historical Society on their fiftieth anniversary. This is for their celebration on November fifteenth.
Any other discussion? Congratulations to the Historical Society. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanrogovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye. Okay, that concludes our new business for this evening. We're at Administrator's Report.
A few things here. I'm sure some of our Commissioners will go into a little bit more detail, but I just wanted to say thank you to Forest Park for putting on a great weekend. I was able to, you know, visit with the Pumpkin Smash. The Rec Board did a great job with that. The Fire over Flash that was opened up by the Forest Park Arts Alliance, a Constitution Court, and then the Chamber with the Wine Walk, made for a very busy Saturday, but it was a very nice Saturday. And I'm very glad that somebody did a non-rain dance because the rain held off till the end of the Wine Walks. That was really nice. And I just, I want to recognize real fast our staff, particularly our department heads. Tonight, you saw two grants on here, particularly for our Police Department. Tonight, it was the Police Department. Other, other nights, it's the Fire Department. Other nights, it's Public Works. Our staff has been working really hard to supplement our finances with these grants for some much-needed equipment. These are not necessarily wish list items. These are items that, you know, we need in order to do our jobs. So I just want to recognize, you know, particularly our department heads and our administrative assistants, because there's a lot of work that goes into getting these grants as far as like paperwork and, you know, follow-up and, you know, just even the process of coming to the council to apply for the grant and then having to come back to the council for accepting of a grant and all the follow-up that comes with it. So congratulations to all of them. And then lastly, Village Hall will be closed tomorrow in honor of Veterans Day, but I do want to let everybody know that the, even though the American Legion is no longer in Forest Park, the Park District has picked up. They're going to try to continue the Veterans Day ceremony. Typically, it would be held at Remembrance Park, but tomorrow, because of the weather, it will be held at the Roos Rec Center at eleven AM, and all are invited to attend. That's all.
Thank you, Administrator. We're at Commissioners' Reports. Commissioner Maxim?
I have a few things. I want to say that I had a really great meeting with Chief Hankis and Administrator Entler last week regarding the future of the Fire Department. And it was a sort of a first discussion and what is, I think, is going to have to be many more, and there was a lot to cover. And I do plan to give a more detailed report later, but there's a few things that I want to follow up on. But we covered general topics of call volume, which as we all know is a big issue. Possible solutions to that, vehicles workload, facility upgrades and plans which overlaps with Commissioner Vogt's department. So I shared, you know, details from our discussion and a meeting with her. And I really want to, I have a lot of appreciation for Chief Hankis's understanding of balancing the needs of the department, but also understanding the financial constraints of the village and, you know, how that's a pretty hefty thing that we need to deal with, and she has a lot of understanding of that, and I really appreciated that. Also, more from the Fire Department, and this is from the union specifically. They are having a fill-the-truck food drive. So I'm going to be helping them go around Madison Street tomorrow and post these in local businesses. If anyone wants to join me and go business to business, you're more than welcome. Just reach out. But what they're doing is from November fifteenth to December twenty-second, you can drop off donations at the Fire Department and/or make monetary donations to the Forest Park Food Pantry. And they are always willing to help, and they did a food drive last year, but they showed up to this neighborhood chili cook-off that was had and made a chili which was really good. And then when we started talking about the food pantry and how they have all these needs, they immediately said, how can we help? So I sent them a copy of the flyer for the Kiwanis, and then they reached out to Brenda and said, you know, what can we do? And then they got this out almost immediately, which is really great. And although it's not exactly my department, I'm also going to give a shout out to the Forest Park Food Pantry. And Kiwanis is doing a big push to get food for them. And so I helped distribute flyers door-to-door, and then on November fifteenth, from ten AM to eleven AM, people in the neighborhood should leave food on their, you know, porch or their lower step or somewhere that's easily accessible, and volunteers are going to be driving through and picking them up and then bringing them over to the community center. So it's a really great initiative. And then lastly, I'm not going to steal Michelle Melanrogovin's thunder, but I wanted to thank her for hosting a really great meeting with a lot of leaders in Proviso to talk about the idea of sort of hunger overall and how different neighborhoods and communities can support each other. And I was thankful to attend that and thankful to Michelle for organizing that with Isaiah Brandon from Maywood. So that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Nero? Mr. Melanrogovin?
Thank you. Just to pick up on what Commissioner Maxim was talking about, I think there's a lot of efforts going on in our, in Forest Park and our communities at large to help address the cut in SNAP benefits and the impact on communities in need. Thank you for pointing out the Kiwanis Food Drive. I was going to point that out. And, and of course, our firefighters are also jumping in to help out. And there are many folks that are helping locally in Forest Park. And efforts are going on in the Proviso area to call for volunteers, donations, both monetary donations and volunteers for area food banks. And I cannot take any credit at all for the network of people who are coming together. I was one of many people who were bringing together folks to create a network of food pantries and leaders to address the immediate needs and the long-term needs for supporting the frontline providers that are serving communities in need. And what we know is that there is a tremendous, basically a doubling and a tripling of folks that are going to food pantries. And even though legislatively, we are aware that some SNAP benefits and some food benefits have been restored, it's not enough. And given that there's a struggle for both food and other resources, that this is a longer-term problem. So it was great to work with Commissioner Maxim to network and start to connect with area providers, meaning food banks and other communities that are serving the area for Thanksgiving. I want to put a call out to anybody who is interested in volunteering, donating, whatever you're called to do. Certainly, supporting our Forest Park community is important. But we're going to be putting on fundraisers and friend raisers and food raisers to, to address this issue short and long term. So thank you for highlighting that, and the need is great. To pick up on what Administrator Entler was talking about, I too enjoyed a lot of things that were happening this weekend in Forest Park. Commissioner Vogt and the Rec Board did an amazing job with the Pumpkin Smash. Commissioner Vogt and the Rec Board did an amazing job with the Pumpkin Smash. And to cheer every pumpkin that got smashed was a rare form of joy. It was amazing. And it was, it was wonderful. And so I highly recommend making sure that gets on your calendar next year. Thank you to the Arts Alliance and our chamber for just a tremendous amount of positive energy that was great for our nonprofits and our businesses. And especially to our Public Works Department that makes sure that our community is beautiful and welcoming and organized and just ready to go for everybody who visits us for these events. I will be celebrating our veterans at the Rec Center, but I wanted to highlight two things, three things. A game day at St. Bernardino's next weekend. Traffic and Safety on November nineteenth. Please be at our commission meeting because we are rocking traffic safety. And most importantly, Operation Rising Spirit, where we will be writing holiday cards to veterans across the state on December fourth at Jimmy's Place. Last year, Forest Park residents wrote seven hundred and ninety-five cards to veterans on the holidays that were distributed across the state with the Department of Veterans Affairs. That was one half of the total amount that was distributed by the state of Illinois. And so we're going to hit a thousand cards this year, I'm sure. So it's a wonderful time. We encourage you to join us, have Jimmy's Pizza and a lot of holiday cheer. Thanks.
Commissioner Vogt?
Thanks. Yes, this weekend's third annual Pumpkin Smash was a huge success and I appreciate that the rain held off and we had a wonderful turnout. I want to thank Commissioner Melon Rogovan, Commissioner Maxham and Village Administrator Entler for stopping by. And we want to thank the Environmental Committee, Garden Club, West Cook Wild Ones and the Historical Society for joining us and chatting with all the folks who came out to smash and compost their pumpkins. We really appreciate their support. I want to also thank our sponsors this year for the event, Showers Hardware and U3 Coffee. U3 has been so wonderfully supportive of many of our rec board activities this year. And we want to thank them for donating the lovely coffee bar and all the fixins. And then I want to thank our rec board members who helped put on the event, Caitlinne, Megan Hunt and Chair Amy Binns Kelvey. They continue to do a lot of work for this event to make it happen every year. And I also want to highlight our Public Works team who helps us set it up. They keep their event running smoothly and then they clean up at the end of the day and we can't do it without them. So we very much appreciate them. And lastly, of course, we need to thank Jeff Binns Kelvey and Dan Marcus, who show up every year to build the smasher and keep that running safely throughout the event. Jeff designed and built the fourteen-foot hammer that smashes pumpkins. So without his hard work, the event would not be as exciting. So thanks to all of them. I also stopped by the Fiber Flash and love how colorful and creative it is again this year. I appreciate our community coming together to add such fun artistry to Constitution Court. And congratulations to the Chamber on their successful wine walk. It was a very busy weekend and I want to highlight our Public Works was super busy all week preparing for this multi-event weekend and we owe them a big thank you. And then last thing, the Rec Board will be taking a break this year and not holding meetings in November and December. And they will resume in 2026 on Thursday, January eighth. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Vogt. All right, Commissioners, as you all, I'm sure know, last, last month, in the final week of October, the legislature passed a bill to replace the Regional Transit Authority with a new authority called the Northern Illinois Transit Authority. It was Senate Bill twenty-one eleven. Included in that bill is what they call the Forest Park Provision, which will now require the CTA to reimburse four suburban communities for their first responder activities at CTA sites within their municipal limits. And those four communities are Rosemont, Oak Park, River Forest, and of course, Forest Park. Today, I had a follow-up meeting with Speaker Welch and a number of mayors. And we talked about some of the issues that are facing some of the suburbs. And they're going to stand up within three years, recommendations for a sworn law enforcement and crime prevention program as part of the Northern Illinois Transit Authority. So I think that's important to our residents who have concerns about safety and security on the trains. NITA establishes a law enforcement task force. It's led by the Cook County Sheriff's Department. Also participating will be the Chicago Police Department, the Metro Police, the State Police. And more recently, they confirmed that suburban communities will have a seat at the table. And that certainly will include Forest Park. I found out that Mayor Brad Stevens, who's also a state rep, is part of the working group. So he and I have been in communications. And he understands our concerns about call volumes at 7-Eleven dispatch planes. And that certain relieving our fire department is going to be a big part of ongoing discussions. Once the NITA board is convened. So that's what I have for tonight. And having said that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to litigation five ILCS one twenty slash two C eleven. Is there a motion?
Yes, sir. Nero will make that motion.
Thank you. It's moved by Commissioner Nero. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Maxim. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melon Rogovan?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt? Mayor Hoskins?
Aye. We adjourn into closed session. We will not return into open session. Tonight.